Join me for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, there's Mr. Williams.
I was doing a bunch of things back there.
That was good of you.
Diane, would you help us with the roll call, please?
Sure. Everyone is present. Councilmember Welling and Mayor Williams are present by phone.
Thank you. So...
We do have a quorum.
We have an agenda, Sarah. Any changes or additions?
I make a motion. Do we approve the agenda?
Motion is approved.
We got a vote on it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 So we have council minutes for October 3rd. Any changes or any... We'll acknowledge those. Council minutes for the special council meeting on October 10th. Any concerns or comments? We'll acknowledge those and then acknowledgement of the work session minutes on the 10th. Any changes or concerns or comments? So we have the bills in front of us. Any concerns, comments?
I have a question. I'm trying to find it. Contract services for the golf course, $73,033.04.
Contract services for the golf course is what we give to them to pay their fees.
Okay. Is that a quarterly or monthly?
Bi-weekly.
Bi-weekly, isn't it?
To $73,000?
Unless we have two other... I didn't forgot to bring my list with me. Maybe there's two that put in that one?
I haven't seen such a big one through the month, so that's why I'm asking because $73,000 caught my attention.
It happens when there's five weeks.
Is that a five-week payment?
Usually when there's five weeks, we see a difference.
Yeah, there was five.
Yeah, there was three payrolls.
Yeah, three payrolls.
Okay, three payrolls. That's what I want. Thanks.
Any other comments or concerns?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
I'll second that.
Got it moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Council comments?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Nothing tonight.
Just glad I made it from hunting camp here and telling him it was cutting the clothes.
Well, welcome back.
Just enjoying the weather today.
And I just want to just mention, we lost a community leader of our Bear River. Ryan Stokes passed this week and just kind of remember him in our comments. He did a lot for our community. Businessman, started a business from the ground and then became a community leader, so he'll be missed.
Yes, he will.
Mayor, do you have anything or Dave? I should ask you.
I have nothing. I don't have anything either.
Okay. I gotta finish pulling up my minutes. Are we appointing somebody to a board? I don't have that in front of me.
Yes, two of them.
Okay, let me finish getting mine up. I started to load it and it was loading slow, so...
Look at mine right here.
Yeah. So we have the following appointments to consider. Do you want... We have Kane Piatt, new appointment to the Historic Preservation Committee. And we also have Allen Kopp, new appointment, five-year term to the Evanston Housing Authority.
Great choices.
Where's Kane tonight?
She's sick.
She not feeling well?
Yeah.
Any comment? No, I think they're great.
I appreciate him willing to serve on these boards. Sometimes that takes a lot of time and I appreciate anybody that serves on our boards.
Do I got a motion to approve those?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Next up is the consent agenda. Do we want to do this together or...
I think we can do them together, can't we?
Do them together.
So the first is a street closure permit for downtown promotions for the annual Hunter Widows Night, Thursday, October 19th, on Main Street. Main Street will be closed from 7th to 12th Street, from 5:00 to 8:00. And then the other is downtown promotions for the annual Trick or Treat, October 31st, on Main Street, 7th to Harrison, from 3:30 to 6:30. I think those are both really good activities for our community, so... Anybody here to speak on either of those?
No, but I think they're both great events for our downtown businesses.
They're both... And they're just... They're great opportunities.
My wife will... I'm sure my wife's going to be at least spending some money.
She bought a ton of candy today.
Literally an Uncle Dennis does.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion here.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
New business. I think I turn those over to you to start with that.
Mr. President, Resolution 23-71, a resolution of the City of Evanston, Wyoming, authorizing the execution of a property use agreement for an automatic changeable copy sign with the Evanston Chamber of Commerce, Wyoming Nonprofit Corporation.
This is a resolution we do usually every year, but I think this one is actually for 10 years, right? It's for the sign that the Chamber has on the corner of 6th and Front Street. That's our property, so they pay us $100 a month to have that sign there and in return we get a certain amount of advertising we can put on that sign. I don't know if you have any questions about it or...
This is like the first renewal, right? Because it just started a few years ago.
A few years back.
Yeah.
Mr. President, the agreement, I think, started in 13?
It has been...
2013. It was a five-year and actually that would have expired in 18, so here we are in 23. So the agreement that you have makes the term 10 years, half of which were already through. So we have another five-year term, which was the original term of the agreement. So that's what that agreement does.
So is that the...
Go ahead.
Is that the only modification to the actual agreement?
That is correct. Our Councilmember Lynn is correct.
So it'll expire in '28, right?
Yes.
I think it's a great partnership for us with the... Do I have a... Do I have a motion to...
I'll introduce with a resident or motion to pass.
Oh, go ahead and second that.
Any comments?
Good agreement.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
How much advertising do we use?
Do we advertise much on that?
No.
Honestly, I don't know. I'm sure we have things on there because our... The Chamber goes to all of our lodging tax meetings and things like that, so... But we'll make sure we utilize it.
I should pay more attention to it, probably.
Yeah, I haven't paid much attention either, I guess.
I drive by there enough. Every once in a while, there's city stuff on there. Not like the one by the over... The underpass, but there's... Resolution 23-72.
Mr. President, Council, Resolution 23-72, a resolution authorizing the City of Evanston, Wyoming, to enter into an operating agreement with the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Evanston, Wyoming regarding the operation of Strand Theater.
Council, Rocco O'Neil, City of Evanston, Community Development Department. The auditors were here a few weeks back and they recommended that we formalize our agreement with the Urban Renewal Agency in regard to the Strand Theater, so this document is just formalizing those operations at the Strand Theater.
Nothing... Mr. Harrison, nothing new or just...
This... Mr. President, this is a first time for this agreement. As Mr. O'Neil indicated, the auditors had seen what services the city was providing and asked the relationship between the Urban Renewal Agency and the city. Mr. O'Neil came to me and said, "This is what the auditors asked." They said the Urban Renewal Agency is a city agency, just like the Housing Authority. I asked him what was being provided. He gave me a list. Those were incorporated into the agreement, which is new, but we did it to make sure that the auditors could track what was being done at that location. The services are not new. The only thing that is new is that everything there was put into writing, but it's primarily to satisfy their questions.
Perfect. Thank you.
So according to this agreement, basically we're doing janitor stuff?
Custodial.
Custodial stuff. That's the word I was looking for, yes. Custodial stuff, IT work, I mean...
Handling the walk-throughs and rentals.
Okay. So at the cost of the city, it's not...
And Julie's read this. She doesn't have a problem with it.
Correct, yeah.
I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
I have questions.
We'll do a second and then we'll do discussion.
I'll go ahead and second it.
Discussion?
Yeah. There's just... I'm a little unclear. So how does that, when the urban renewal takes over with this lease agreement, how does that benefit? So what I don't see here is... So this is a lease agreement, but what is the urban renewal's plan for quite simply an ROI on the cost of the restorations? You know, what are the yearly financials going into this? If the city is putting into this, is there a plan going forward that's going to have cost-effective ROI? And are they going to... What are they planning to do with this? Is it going to prevent rentals from blah, blah, blah? It's just, you know, normally when you have a tenant, you do a background check.
Yeah. It's... So this is an operating agreement. The urban renewal actually owns the Strand Theater. The city does not. And so the idea behind this, in the past, the rentals were handled by one city staff, Jane Law, who was our urban renewal director in the past, Mickey Cox, who does a wonderful job of renting our other facilities. We thought incorporating the strand into her package of buildings would help with getting the strand out there and it definitely has. We've seen an uptick in rentals, so right now the strategy is to get events and folks in the Strand Theater because it hasn't been utilized to its full potential, so...
No, I've been calling Sundance, sending them emails, trying to get some films up here, and I thought it was for sale.
It is. URA's listed it for sale.
So if URA owns it and URA has it for sale, URA is renting it. Why are we paying anything for it?
We are not paying anything for it.
It's just providing services as far as custodial, IT, just kind of support services for the strand. The URA takes... You tell me if I'm wrong, but URA takes care of everything else.
Correct, yeah.
Basically, this agreement says we're going to be a support in some...
With our city staff, basically.
Yes. So we view the Strand Theater as a public space, as a public amenity, and so we provide staff to help facilitate that. Like Councilman Lynn mentioned, custodial, you know, limited IT services. They pay for all the equipment and we help them install it and make sure it's working and operational, so this type of... These type of activities have been going on for the last 10, 15 years. They just haven't been formalized.
I understand that, but that is payroll. It's taxpayers. That's going... That is that crossover. There's a blur there and I'm just wondering because that's one of the things I look at because it doesn't, you know... We don't... The urban renewal does not have a great track record on ROIs.
I don't know if I have a comment on that.
That's mine. You know, that's the statistics. That's the numbers against the restorations versus the bookings. So I'm wondering if this is going to inhibit anything going forward because I just... It's a proven track record of not having a great success of... In other words, the city shouldn't own one building. We always say that. We shouldn't. We are not landlords. We shouldn't be in real estate and yet we are and we... Every two weeks, it seems like I'm... It's a bit of an exaggeration. Once a month, there's something before me that the city is solidifying and putting money towards a piece of real estate that we don't want to own supposedly, but we don't want to let go of.
A little side note, as far as the strand, as far as the Roundhouse, as far as a lot of these urban renewal agency stuff, the money has been funded a lot for what MICA has been able to do through grant money. So if you want to calculate an ROI on, you know, grant money, the grant money is usually supplied to community-type situations. So when it's grant money that goes to restore the building or restore the face, where look at it more, not necessarily a return on investment. Return on investment being private investment, city investment, but grant money that is put toward a building like a Roundhouse or a Strand to restore historical situation or to restore a community facility, ROI would be nice to get it back, but at the same time, a lot of that grant money is set aside just for projects like that where you're probably not going to get an ROI. So now that we have this facility, that money, in a sense, can be not looked at as far as ROI, but now let's use the facility and now let's generate some revenues off that facility is the way I would look at it.
Yeah, that's a great way to look at it. There's also the other way to look at it, which is grant money is grant money and it could be going towards individuals along historic Main Street to do roofs and to do help with Front Street cleanup and help with, you know, we only have...
It can, but...
...amount of historical and it can go towards that. And MICA's time and...
Some of those grants are only government-based, though.
Yeah.
So that... If it was to go to private people, those grants are different than... A lot of the ones that MICA's applied for are federal funding just for government situations, so that's where that money's came from.
Yeah, and...
Mr. President, as Mr. O'Neil indicated, the... These are indirect costs. As Councilmember Hegeman noted, they're personnel time and allocation for the services that he mentioned. He also mentioned this has been going on for several years. The reason this is before you is that our auditors requested that we formalize what that relationship is. I would assume that if there were to be a negative impact on other city services provided by the employees providing these services now and contemplated under this agreement, which by the way is an annual agreement tied to the fiscal year, we would have already seen that by now.
Yeah, it's been going on a long time.
Mr. President, that's correct. So I think that's kind of a little ado about nothing, but anyway.
Thank you.
I guess I'm missing a point. Is urban renewal not part of the city? So when you say owned, that's not... That's not city-owned. Urban renewal is in fact a company?
They're not a company. They're an organization established by state statute through city resolution, so they're an agency of the city.
So who actually owns the Strand?
The Urban Renewal Agency.
Really owns it?
There was a lot of donated money and time that went into the Strand Theater. The city cannot accept donations. Urban renewal, through their different programs they have, can accept private donations. You know, you could have bought a seat for that or a brick, so there's a lot of private money that went into that facility that, you know, we wouldn't have got if it was owned by the city.
And so this agreement, since it's suffered from the city, this agreement that it's made is not going to hamper one that you're looking at, as you mentioned, tend to mention that the cell of that facility...
Correct.
Okay, so that whatever this agreement is will not hamper that?
Correct.
Mr. Harris, I think, did a really good job of explaining that this isn't to change anything that we've been doing. It's just to make sure that the lines are clear, that we're making sure that there's a tracking method to make sure that we're all in agreement and nobody's taking advantage of the other.
Understood. I mean, but in the end, government is a business. Every building on Main Street should make money some way, somehow, and if we oversee it, if we take money from the federal government, it's expected to benefit and turn a profit for those in the community some way, somehow, not be funded by the city. Those are the things... The blurred line and just because something has been going on for 15 years doesn't mean... Doesn't need to be looked at. Tradition is great for apple pies, but it really sucks for going forward.
And I think there's been, at least in my tenure on council, there has been a real push to get the city out of the real estate business, including the hotel, including the strand, including...
Yeah. But there isn't because they're still here and they're still going on and we say that every single time we're up here. We don't want to be in real estate and yet we are every single time. And there's not even a price on Loop Net for the strand. By the way, there's no price, so if somebody wants to buy it, they need to know how much it is.
That's what I don't care for.
I would recommend you reach out to the Urban Renewal Agency Board and chat with them about what they'd like to see as far as acquisition goes for that facility. I'm really not sure.
Sure.
What that number is.
You're welcome to go to those board meetings.
And Rocco, again, you're taking the heat with a bunch of questions that you don't necessarily need to or have the answer to and I appreciate that, but I have to ask them.
Yeah, justified. And some additional context here, this is a totally new urban renewal board. They inherited these properties that were purchased, some of them two decades ago, and so they're trying to figure out the best practices and best methods moving forward to get those buildings back into private hands. And right now, it's using that facility as a community space, getting eyes on it, making it useful for the public, and if the city can facilitate that, we'd like to.
Just to make a comment, in fact, I call the urban renewal and they do have prices on it, so you're correct. You call because I guess you have a lead real estate agent. The only thing that they don't do is follow up and so I think you might want to either consider another real estate agent.
Maybe one from Wyoming?
Yeah, mind somewhere to follow up.
Again, poor guy. Not even with the urban renewal.
This is all fine. They're volunteers.
Remember, Mr. President, that's the urban renewal agency's building. It's up to the city's decision.
And I was going to make that comment. That's not our decision here. That's not Rocco's. That is...
Rocco, may I make a suggestion that when it comes to urban renewal, you bail, be sick, have a headache, and have one of them come?
I think URA's doing a great job considering the place that they're in and we're just trying to help and provide clarity and staff where we can, so...
I also have seen the URA do some amazing things in this town as far as what they've accomplished with that strand, which was a burnt-down old movie theater, what the Roundhouse is. The renewal ball we used to have, I miss. I thought it was fantastic, raised a lot of money, got the community together. So there's a lot of positives that the URA has done, so I hate to sit here and bash on them. They do do a lot of good things, too, so...
And I would agree and I would agree that most of the not-for-profits in our community are struggling to some degree or another, watching it and listen to them and ask when they... I talked to several of them. So we have a... Any more comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Lovely shirt.
Thank you.
Resolution 23-73. Sheriff's?
Mr. President, Resolution 23-73, a resolution of the governing body of the City of Evanston approving change order number four for the 18th, 19th, and West Summit Water Replacement Project in the City of Evanston.
Good evening. This change in order number four is for milling and overlay for 18th and 19th Street. We originally just... We're going to patch the streets, but they're in pretty rough shape. Milling and overlaying would be best-case scenario, leaving... Trying to leave the streets better than we found them. Through the... Want to be on the record that through trenching and laterals and hydrants and truck traffic that the asphalt's been deteriorated in milling and overlaying, it would... You know, it's a small cost considering the total project cost and this is also by recommendation of the council to kind of overlay the streets and I think if we can actually get it paved will be good, so they... If this is approved, they will start milling on Thursday, so...
E.P.
And I know the people down there have dealt with a lot and it's been a rough summer, but have had a lot of complaints and things, but we're putting almost $2 million into the neighborhood, so I hope they can see the benefits of this project with fire flow protection and replacing the water mains.
I'm going to speak in favor of this. By the time we cut these streets and put, you know, you see it all over town, they look really bad when we're done with the project and maybe not when we're first done with it. We give it two or three years of the freeze-thaw cycle. I'd like to see this done on all our future projects, too, because when we're done taking care of our citizens, tearing up their streets, they can't get to their driveways, I mean, it's been a real inconvenience, I think, just for the way our city looks. I think doing an overlay of the whole thing is the way to go in the future.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's how we want to move forward and especially if we can use funds, appropriate funds for that, makes it a lot easier, so...
Mr. President, may I ask Mr. Yafam?
Please.
Dean, the engineer, a question. Dean, is this an ARPA project?
This one is not. This one is enterprise funds from the city.
So we're using... We're using... And I thought...
We applied for funding for this, but we did not receive funding for this one. We did receive funding for the Sage Street water line after it was done and built.
The silver lining here is that there is an increased cost, but I think in working with the treasurer, we've determined that we have a very good argument for the utilization of 100% enterprise funds for this change order and if not for most of the project. And Mr. Barker had told staff that one of the problems with... And Mr. Barker had told staff that one of the problems with replacement of the lines and patching was that you have uneven surfaces with settling or whatnot, and that it, it actually was better to take out large sections of the street and mill them and then replace them, so that's what caused this, but it looks like we can allocate this mostly, if not all, to the water enterprise fund, which means that general fund doesn't happen.
We, we've had so many problems with the water lines and different things over there for so long, it, it needed to be done, and if you drive over there, I'm, I was thinking, how are we just going to patch that? There's, there's no way, and, and we get told, we're, I get a lot of comments, when they going to fix this road, when they going to fix that road? If we take care of it, I'm a believer in doing things done, get it done and get it done right and have it, then, then you can move on to the next projects and not have to think about, I'm going to have to go back three years from now and redo that. So, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, your honor.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion?
I will say that I know people are frustrated with the paving schedule and the rain, and unfortunately, we have contractors that are on multiple projects this part of the state, and these guys have been on Y dot jobs, so we're trying to take turns with that, and they are utilizing subs, and Daryl has done some patching for them to try to expedite and not lose good paving days, so I appreciate them trying to get it paved, and they got other streets to pave as well, so I just want to add that.
I would, I would second that. I, I think they're trying to do a really good job, and, well, my neighborhood's been dealing with it, too, so.
It's been a war zone for sure, but hopefully it'll be buttoned up, so.
So, we got a motion and a, and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Comments from departments? Looks like some people enjoying the spring break, so. So, Dean, do you have anything else? Preston, anything? Rocco, anything else? Trudy? Keith? Kim? Diane? Mr. Harris?
Nothing, Mr. President, thank you.
Public participation. Any of the couple out there have any comments? Okay. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any opposed?
I'll second, I vote yes.
Good job, President.